At long last, we're having a committee meeting on the proposal to finish out the event center some six, seven years after we decided to leave it as a shell unfinished on the inside. In that intervening time, we've discovered that the fairgrounds has been and the expo center have been well-used. The expo center itself actually generates a little money for us to cover operations. I mean, it completely covers operations, but a little bit more for replacement cost. It's a successful facility. However, it's one of those facilities, we knew even then that we were not going to be able to finish it out to the degree we want to and that we were already establishing as a something of a standard for the city of Conway. So this is an attempt to come back and achieve a finish out of that front area and help tick up the rest of the property around it, even including part of the expo building itself to a higher city standard that we accept and actually push for in other city facilities. What you've seen here is an expansion of the original conception. Mr. Rick Sowell is here, who can also testify that we were working with some pretty severe monetary constraints to trying to get that whole project under budget, but do as much as we could with it. So we didn't even envision some of the things that this finish-out could do for us, but as our standards of what we expect as the city of Conway and our facilities evolved, so have our plan. And if I remember right, I think the finish-out initially was something in the range of about $900,000 to $1 million, but that was very plain finishes.
Very plain, and a lot of assumptions were made, and that was many years ago.
That's been years ago, and inflation has reigned. And also, the finish-out of the front area, the plaza area, if you included that in, it was going to be something around 1.4 to 1.5.
Correct.
Well, it's come in higher than that, but we've done more than originally conceived. So, Rick, do I turn this over to you and let you kind of walk us through what we're going to be doing here?
Okay. Be happy to do that. I'm Rick Sowell from Sowell Architects, and so, Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate this opportunity to present this to you. I'm going to go ahead and put the boards up on the easel. So you guys, as I mentioned, these things, you can see exactly what I'm talking about. The city of Conway has done a tremendous job over the last several years with projects that we've undertaken. As a citizen of the town, I'm extremely proud of our city and the quality of construction that we're doing. It's also been a pleasure, by the way, to be a part of a lot of that. So, starting way back with, I think, maybe the county library, and then we went to the chamber, and then we did the ballparks, the softball parks, and everything that the city's been involved in so far has been done on a high standard. And so, we wanted to continue that high standard, although we understand and realize that we have to deal with budgets. And so, when we first started looking at this, we probably, well, not probably, we went probably, well, well overboard trying to upgrade this thing. We realized pretty quickly that we were in a position where we didn't want to come and present that number to you. So, we did some what we call value engineering in our business. Wesley, I just completely covered you up there. Sorry about that. Value engineering, which is cost-cutting, methods of cost-cutting. And so, the idea in the value engineering is to take some of the fluff out of the project without harming the integrity of the building. And so, that's what we've done. So, we're back to you to present to you tonight, not the high-end stuff that maybe we found in California, but we're here to present to you a building that we think is appropriate for the city of Conway and will uphold the standards that we've established up to this point. Just a very brief description of the scope of this work. As the mayor has stated, this goes beyond what we originally anticipated. The work that you're seeing on the exterior right there includes a very nice, large, well-finished drive-through area. The circular drive is part of this effort. A plaza with a lot of plants and benches and places to stand outside the event center is included. It also includes the finish-out of the interior of the event center. It's about 14,400 square feet of space in there. It includes six meeting rooms. If you remember these areas, three of them are about 900 square feet each, and they can be all be opened up to each other. The other three on the other side of the lobby are about 1,200 square feet each, and they can all be opened up to each other. So, we can get some very large, very nice meeting spaces in here. We also have the appropriate restrooms. We also have a very nice commercial catering kitchen. It's not a cooking kitchen, it's a catering kitchen. We have some offices in here, and we have a very spacious lobby that I'll show you in another rendering here in just a minute.
Is that 96K? Is that just for paving like the front area? It doesn't count the whole large parking lot too, right?
No, no.
Okay. I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure.
We have addressed, though, on the west side of the exhibition hall, we've addressed the plenty of everything that was possible. The other thing that we've done on the west side of the exhibit hall is we've taken a lot of those canopies that are out there, the whole mechanical equipment up, and realizing we had all those overhead garage doors. So, we can close those. We can close two on each side, so there's four additional storage rooms there. 400 square feet. Those were desperately needed. Other things that we've done, we've extended it all the way around, have that building around the back. Fourth yard, you can also see. A lot of improvements, a lot of advancements. And the west side of the building takes on a really, uh, a little bit of black back, and the living room, the living room side, a little bit inside. And that's sort of a quick slope of the work.
Happy to address anything else you'd like to know, or also take any questions if anybody's interested. I know I left some things out.
And certainly, we want to recognize that the Salter Group for their work and how you've engineered this.
Yes. And the Salter Group can probably give you a whole lot more information, specific information that I can. So, we have Dustin, Jesse, Nathan, all from the Salter Group. And also, let me introduce the rest of my crew, too. Two of my architects are here, and yes, they do have the same last name, Cody Ferris and Emily Ferris, from Conway. Two more architects from Conway. I'm very pleased to have them. And of course, we have Mr. Garrett Anderson here with us, who's been very instrumental, and the interior finishes of this. And Tamara Claflin is also here as his assistant. She's the one that does all the work. Garrett gets all the credit.
Rick, can I ask a question? What's the difference in a catering kitchen versus a regular kitchen?
We don't have any cooking equipment. You cross the threshold.
No ovens.
You start putting equipment in there that produces greasely, and so we don't have any ovens, we don't have ranges, anything like that. Now, we do have microwaves.
No warming drawers, nothing like that?
Yeah, we do have warming drawers.
Okay.
We don't have cooking equipment.
Okay.
And so, once you introduce the cooking equipment, then you open up the door to commercial kitchen requirements by the state, including three straps and three stove sinks and all kinds of things. It's also, you know, I think the city didn't have a full prep kitchen.
We didn't want to get it. We either had to franchise that out to somebody, or we would have to get into staffing it ourselves, and we were not to do that. We thought prep kitchen would be the better approach.
Also, how many, what's the capacity on those meeting rooms? If you had a wedding reception or something like that there, or?
Yeah. You know, I started calculating capacities because I figured that question would come up. It just depends on the way you arrange it. If you're just in there in rows of chairs, it'll be one capacity. If you're in there behind tables lined up like a seminar, it'll be another. If you have tables and you're sitting around it for dining, so, let me get my phone in, just to calculate.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
At the meantime, why don't we talk about the interior and?
Rick, before you do that, one time we had talked about being able to pull curtains or pull something and divide these rooms up. Still, that's in there?
That's still in there. And these are not just curtains, and they're not the accordion-type partitions.
Gotcha.
What Andy's talking about is the ability to subdivide these large meeting rooms. So, if we have three 900 square foot meeting rooms over here, you've got really nice partitions that fold, essentially built together, and they stack on top of each other in an accordion style, and then they tuck away in a little closet and close the door. So, you can open all of that up, and you've just got one big room that operates as a self-contained space, or you can subdivide it into two or three spaces depending on the need. And that's the same thing on the other side with the larger rooms.
And one other thing, and this is mine, or probably in the entire scheme of things, but when I look at this and I see a green roof and I see kind of gold-looking outlines, I think this is at Arkansas Tech. Does anybody else see that? You didn't see that, Mr. Ellsinger? Obviously, I don't know. What I was looking.
Inside of it, yes.
Understand, understand.
Are you looking more at the interior?
No, I'm looking more at that picture right there.
At the building.
It looks like you pulled up in Russellville, to me.
Only you would think.
Thank you very much.
I didn't even think.
Now, Mr. Anderson is back here, going, "What is this idiot talking about?"
I wanted to say this.
I wish you would.
Since you're knocking the green.
No, 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 not knocking it. Just making a statement.
I hope is that if you approve this tonight, you've got this in the budget. If you don't approve it, by the way, but we've got this iridescent material that would be going on the, and if you look at it.
Ooh, it's different. Yeah, it does. Looky there.
It's not going to be tech.
Oh, now you know how to butter him up.
There you go. There you go. Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, but.
Oh, I mean, green and red makes purple, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
It's called holo-red.
But you gotta be.
It blends into.
That's cool.
Holo-red, green. Olo, like H.A. Wells.
But it'll have a more copper appearance.
Thank you.
If you're not willing to spend that kind of money, you can go to this, which is a little more vanilla. The other is just, it's going to be so startling when you pull up, because it shifts. I don't know how many of you have been to Rogers recently?
I have.
You have the privilege of doing the building there. Apparently, we're getting an award for it in another month. The Hunt Tower Building, and we did that in green iridescent and blue iridescent. And in the morning, when you drive up on the highway, it all looks white.
Oh, cool.
As the sun transitions, it turns to a rich green and a rich blue.
I knew you had the answer for me. I just knew you had the answer.
If you gave him the money.
Yeah, well.
We're doing the other one. I want to pass these around.
Yes, sir.
Also, the same building I just described, this is the second floor. We have a 15,000-square-foot terrace, and we have all of this planting. And I'd like you to look at the planting carefully, and we've got a budget figure to do a big plot like that at the entrance.
Of this building?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And that would come out of our landscape budget. And I'll just give you the ending before we get all the way around the room. That's all artificial. And you can stand next to it and you can tell.
Wow.
It's the most amazing stuff. And it'll give you about at least a 30-year life. And right now, we could afford fourteen. And right now, we could afford to do this if the budget is approved fast.
Which of these line items?
Sorry to interrupt, Rick.
Oh, no, I started.
I saw a crisis coming up, but I thought we had to avert it.
I did. I did. I did.
You can see the very front of it, how it's shown in two-tone. That's what that little.
You're good. Just leave it up there, Rick. You're good.
That would change colors. That's what we're attempting to depict.
We addressed the interior renovation for you. Again, we have done some fairly extreme value engineering here to get it back to this. I think you'll look at it and agree that it's impressive or a cover to the city's recent activity and events to be in place when I walk in. We intentionally dressed up the lobby area. We even have some art shown. I don't know if you guys recall the long corridor behind all the meeting rooms. It's set up with track lighting so that it can display art the entire. We're actually showing some pieces of that right there. Special ceiling. There really is not a lot of extra in here. We've got some nice plants and of course, the floor is a wood floor. Actually, get a glimpse into one of the meeting rooms right here and get a sense of what that's going to feel like. And then, that door up there is empty.
And we've already purchased the flooring.
We have. We own all of that. We own all the furniture.
Pretty stuff that changes colors.
And that's the good news. When we were together doing all the value engineering, I think the thing that really hit me is that we've already established the pace. It's already set. And you could almost take it all away surrounding what we've purchased and we're still going to have it impressive.
That's what that was called.
So, you allowed us to do that early and that's really locked in project. You know, it's a lot of times, no offense, Rick, but a lot of times, architects set up the shell and they sit around and hope to put something in the shell. We did the reverse. We did what's inside the shell first. And so, you'll never feel cheated. We've got really neat fabrics, neat colors. Carpeting is quite impressive. And it was originally going to be a broadloom. And then, we request, Steve Ebbetson requested that we consider tile. And we did that and came up with an argyle pattern.
Mr. Fine.
And so, overall, it's going to look like carpet. It's going to, it's not going to look like your basic carpet tile that you see so often where one's going this way and the other one's going that way. This is going to have an overall pattern that really snaps it all together. We've even purchased all the wall coverings. They're all done. I shot each other in the face. As we all know, he's extremely talented and an amazing man when it comes to the, that's extraordinary. I'm pleased to say that we're going to have the same effect here. You guys have been in the airport and it was very similar. I can talk a lot about this and I'm pleased to do so. We do have contractors here.
Now, I will say that didn't we add in some more robust drainage out front to accommodate what we probably didn't take into full account far seven or eight years ago? But, that's more robust, I mean, because this is, the front door is not much different than height. Actually, it's downhill a little bit from the curb. And so, the more robust drainage was important to make sure you didn't have flooding when you had the driveway and the paving at the plaza area out in front. So, that's been added into and that's been a cost enhancement because of that.
Sure.
Absolutely. Hello, Jesse Hammett, I'm the Vice President of Salter Construction. What you'll see on the original, when we put the site work package together, we didn't have a full design. So, we went out with our site contractors and put together a budget that we felt like we could do to perform the drainage and the grading. And it was more with pencil and paper. We ended up going back and talking to Ronnie Hall and your engineering department. And we've got a design on that now. That's the reason why our dirt work number went down is working with those guys and we got the grades worked out. There is quite a bit of difference between the finished floor and the road in the front. So, we had some drainage there. But, those guys put together a good package that was very cost-effective as you can see. We added a line item on the new proposal here that is site drainage improvements because there are some other items on that site that are in need of immediate attention. There are some open ditches there to the back that have got some erosion and they're compromising the stability of the paving that we already have in place. If those are allowed to set, you're just wasting money because that paving will continually erode and it will just continue to wash out. So, picking up the savings on the grading, getting the dirt work, storm drainage and all that finalized, we're able to shift back. And we've got some outlet structures that we have figured in that we've worked with Finley and Ronnie to get established. Some outlet structures with concrete bottomed ditches that will handle those two main areas. So, I feel like what we've proposed here is going to stabilize your site and give you positive drainage.
Actually, it will eliminate some of the sedimentation that would otherwise.
Absolutely.
Get in the drainage system.
Absolutely. The worst thing you can have is, you guys probably know with asphalt, is water. And as it continues to erode, if you guys drive out there, you'll be able to see it. It steadily, that ditch is getting larger and it's moving on down. So, now's the time to get that addressed and handled or it's just going to cost more in the future.
Very good. Anybody else like to speak to this? And then, we'll open up to questions from the council. Okay. Then, you're on defense. Counsel, you're on offense.
I've got a couple of questions. The ACM panels that I asked Mr. Anderson about.
Yes, sir.
Just a few moments ago in the preliminary budget proposal, it was about 2X of what it is.
That's correct.
On the final item. So, we've cut back a bunch of those apparently.
Yes, originally, we had that iridescent or incand- iridescent, excuse me, ACM panel on the side canopies, the west entry canopy, the ticket window canopy, on the front bumpouts there, as well as that front portico. What we've done is we've basically, well, we have. We've deleted them on the side canopies. We've deleted them everywhere except for that front canopy.
Okay.
And that accounts to about 50% of the square footage. So, by taking out the, we didn't remove them completely, but we took the ACM off of the side canopies, the west entry canopy, the ticket window canopy on the west side and on the front bumpouts, kept it solely on that front portico. And that constitutes about 50% of the total. Now, what we've done, if you notice on your line item, the paint went up a little bit. By removing those ACM panels, we've put paint on those. So, those side canopies that we were going to remove and rebuild and skin in ACM, we're leaving those intact and painting them. And we'll paint them a color that matches the background. The idea is, is to make those go away. Your focus is on that front portico where we're spending the money.
And that works, Mr. Anderson?
It does. I'm delighted. Yeah, we were all together on this.
Very good. And I don't mean to look past you to ask a question, but.
By all means.
He's my color guy. I can tell you that right now.
By all means.
Still not showing you a whole lot of mercy on the budget, but it is better than it was.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I did notice a masonry component in the final budget proposal that was not in the original. Can you talk to that?
The original, that masonry item was an ad alternate. And by going through the value engineering, we have elected to include it so that we can have the masonry veneer down the sides.
Okay. Each side?
Yes, sir. No, it is. It is the east side, correct?
West.
West and south.
West side that faces the parking lot?
I apologize. I had to flip it around. And the back of the event center. So, if you're standing on the south side of the building, looking up between the two buildings, what you'll see is brick there too.
On the interior.
Okay. But, not on the front?
It was already on the front.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Looks like the lighting went down considerably.
Lots of changes on the lighting. The original lighting package was to the nines. What we've basically done is we've gone back and in the offices and the assembly areas, we've changed those to two-by-four lay-in lights. They are still LED. We've got LED can lights in the hard ceilings. We've kept the main decorative fixtures in the lobby and the track lighting in the back for the artwork. So, the intent is that the public spaces remain nice, but we've taken some of the frills out of the office and the meeting areas to save that money.
We don't have that heated and air-conditioned at this point in time?
No, sir.
None at all?
It was truly a shell.
I was going to say, it looks like that's probably a cost to do the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, there was a reduction. If you look at the two, we got on the roof and discovered that we can reuse the existing roof curbs that were put up there during the original construction. So, that's the change between the two budgets on the HVAC.
I just, I did not remember whether the front of that building was heated and cooled or not. So, that's.
We were able to utilize existing roof curbs that were installed on the original construction.
Okay, this looks magnificent. Now, how are we going to pay for it? Glad you asked that, aren't you?
Absolutely. It kind of segues. Thank you very much. It kind of segues us into the.
And the other council members might have some questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Any other questions, Scott?
I didn't mean to.
I'm good. I'm.
Thank you.
Very good. If you'll notice on the third page of the handout, on top of the construction costs, there are a few other things that we need to pay for. The AV system to make sure that we have as good a system as we could, as we would want, somebody who would want to rent this space, once it's done, will be able to have the AV system, the audiovisual system to make presentations in a very professional, modern model, modern manner. So, that's in there. The catering kitchen equipment to make sure we can buy the warming trays and everything. The furniture fixtures and equipment, those $75,000. So, the grand total is 2.7 million and change. If you look at the spreadsheet that I had handed out previously, talking about the upcoming projects we had, you'll notice that this project is a little bit at 2.7 and a half million dollars. It's 2.75. It's 2.75 million dollars. It's a little bit higher than what we had it plugged in at on that spreadsheet, okay? But, what I don't have figured in on the spreadsheet or in this number presentation you see here is the offset cost donated by the AMP Commission, okay? That's not showing up as a revenue on here. So, you take that in, it actually goes down. That number was 600, Sheila?
I think it was five is what I was thinking.
So, it actually goes down to about two, not 2.75, but 2.25. So, we're under where we were on this spreadsheet. Then, with the bridge project, we're going to be actually a little under on that, but that doesn't count the ramps and approaches to the bridge. So, if you look at this spreadsheet, you're getting really close to what we were actually looking at in these various projects. Now, if you look up at the top, we'll plug in that $500,000 that comes from the AMP Commission. And then, we've got five-year financing that's going to be required to do all of these at one time. Now, that includes the other projects, the tennis complex, for example, which we've not, you know, taken a step towards yet. But, if you do the 500, the $5 million, five-year financing that would cover these projects, that would be included. And we have the money coming in on a monthly basis to cover that.
Remind me, because I brought the sheet we had before, what did we decide were the priorities that we wanted to fund before? Is that what this reflects?
That.
Because I guess I had noted, you mean about Pompey Park and Conway Station Park and other things that we had kind of decided the last time we looked at this.
Yeah, that was not included. I mean, I didn't include those here. But, there were those things that you mentioned, finish out the.
Right.
Conway Station, which was how much, Steve?
About a million dollars.
Right, a million dollars. So, that would push the tennis complex out.
And would, and we talked, I know we talked about that the tennis complex could be moved to 2017 because obviously, it's not going to start this fiscal year or this calendar year.
If you remember, the base discussion we had, that we're bringing in right at $3 million. A million, if you think of it in thirds, the first million is spent on debt service for the two big ball complexes and the original elements of the fairgrounds.
Well, I guess, but using the spreadsheet that you gave us before and I kind of put the numbers in, I guess I don't show us having to borrow that much. If the $2 million for the tennis complex moves to 2017, I don't know. I don't think we need to borrow $5 million.
We're not making a borrowing decision tonight.
No, I know. But, I guess, two issues. Number one, prioritizing which projects and when they're going to happen. And I'm wondering what ones aren't on here that we talked about before that I thought were on here and aren't. Because I think that should be part of the discussion. And it really, it's not anything about the Expo Center because it's about where we thought it was going to be. So, I guess that's a bigger discussion.
Right.
With all that.
So, we can do that. We are presuming that this is one of the projects, so we're moving forward with it.
Right.
And then, it's a matter of what else we add in, what we take out.
So, I guess what I'd like to do is see this sheet updated to include the things we talked about before as being a priority. Because I know it had Conway Station Park in there and it had the playground for Pompey Park. I think we talked about that. And none of that's in here.
This wasn't to show you what we are going to spend money on. This is just to show you the money we have and cost associated.
But, if the things we are going to spend our money on aren't subtracted from this, it's misleading.
Understand. This was one of those things that was in line first. Okay, so, we're showing you that first.
Right, and.
And just to show you that you can deduct the things that you, you know, that we haven't really moved towards yet.
Right.
We've moved towards the ball field, the infield, Don Owens, the event center and the pedestrian crossing. And we purchased the South German Lane and have already borrowed money to do that, okay? So, that you can deduct and take that cost out. It's basically already been done and take out the five-year financing to consider what's in play. The one thing, the one thing we haven't done is the tennis complex. So, that's available.
Pompey Park Playground and the Laurel Park Trail.
On this sheet, the one thing we haven't done is the tennis complex, okay? So, you can take that $2 million out and play with that. Everything else is pretty much we're moving towards.
I don't know why I'm not communicating this well. There are other parks, projects.
I get that, Shelley. I get that.
That aren't on here.
I understand that.
Okay.
But, what I'm telling you, the park that's flexible and movable is the $2 million on the tennis complex.
Correct.
Everything else, we are pretty much moving towards.
But, it's not on here and doesn't reflect how much money we're spending.
Everything else on here, we are moving towards.
Including Pompey Park and Conway Station.
It's not on here. I am talking about what's on here. We are already moving towards it, okay?
I would like to see.
The event center is moving on it. The Don Owens infield, we're moving on it. The Dave Ward Drive pedestrian crossing, we're moving on it. The South German Lane, we have already moved. Springfield Bridge, we're moving on it. The one thing on those costs that we're not moving on is the tennis courts. So, that is what's flexible in what's shown right here. So, we can take the tennis courts out and add anything in.
No. What I'd like to see are the projects that we agreed to fund before that aren't on here.
We can put them in there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm showing you what's flexible with this money shown.
And not what, not the other ones that we've committed to?
I understand. That's not what I'm trying to show you.
But, what you're showing us is not what money we have available to play with.
Yes, it is.
Except for the $1 million for Conway Station Park and the $340,000 for Pompey Park and.
That's not the money we have to play with. That's the things we want to spend the money on. This shows you the money we have to play with.
The last time.
It's fine. That's money we want to spend it on, things we want to spend it on.
That have to come out of this same pot.
Fine, that's what we want to spend it on. This is the money we're playing with.
Without those things subtracted out.
Without those things paid for yet.
Correct.
If we want to pay for them, you've got to subtract things out of this.
That's what I think the last discussion we had, that's what we told you.
Well, I'm not saying we're not doing that. I'm just showing you what money we have available.
Except for those projects.
Those projects are expenses. It's not revenues.
You cannot, but these are not expenses down here?
I'm saying this is, we're already committing to some of those. And we can, the one thing we have is the tennis courts. So, that money is available to spend on anything, including Pompey Park and Conway Station. So that money is available to spend on anything, including Pompey Park and Conway Station Park.
But I think the tennis community thinks that we're going to...
They do.
To do the tennis.
And so we have some priority issues that we've got to deal with.
Well, I guess I'm gonna have to go back and listen to the recording or pull my notes again and pull it out and see what we decided that night.
I'm not arguing that's not what, that's your priorities to decide. I'm just showing you that in the money depicted, the only thing that's flexible right now is the $2 million on the tennis court. Except for the $500,000 is a revenue from the A&amp;P Commission, that's all the revenue. And except for the things, the Pompey Park and the Conway Station Park, that could be listed on here, but the other things we're already committed to.
Which the last meeting we had, we asked those to be listed.
Well, I can list them. I can write them down right now with my pen. It's not gonna change the amount of money available.
Shelley, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
I mean, we've talked publicly to the citizens, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing.
And that's fine. I'm not disagreeing with that.
Yes.
I'm just saying, what money we have available is, that's the limits.
I understand that, and I'm not sure we need to borrow $5 million. But for tonight, for this purpose, I think we need to move on with this.
We need to move on this, because this is profitable as well.
It sounds to me like we need to have another committee meeting to discuss the parks, because there's a disconnect here that's serious.
Next meeting we need to do that if we don't have any...
Well, what I'm gonna say is, the money-wise, it's gonna come back to this.
No, I understand.
And like I said, we don't need to borrow $5 million, because we've already got the German, South German Land paid off. We've already borrowed part of that. So our total left to borrow to fit this scheme is something less than $4 million.
So you'd have to take the 1.2 out to get to see what's remaining to be available.
And then you've already got 1.2 listed up there above the, what would be 3.8 left on the revenue side.
Yeah, I guess we just need a full list of what the projects are, how much they cost.
You can do that.
Because it was on there before, and now it's not. And so this is a different sheet than what we saw before.
And what you'll get is down here at the bottom, you'll get a negative amount, and you'll have to back that off to get up into the numbers that I'm showing you now.
Right.
Correct.
That's right.
Right.
And we'll do that, we can do that before we borrow any money.
Right.
I mean, I know the bridge thing is a great thing to do, I think that's awesome. But I know we did talk about some other projects prior to the bridge coming into the picture as well, so...
That's true. The bridge is, you gotta keep in mind that that's grant money that has to be expended by the end of next year. And if we don't expend it...
We lose it.
We lose it. Okay, so it does have to come with the timing and it does come with the cost.
Yeah.
Okay. So by accepting this, we will move on this project to bid.
Correct.
Is that correct?
I'm good with that.
Any other discussion?
But where this says 2.5 million, it should be the 2.7, is that correct?
2.25. It would show, on the expenses, it would show 2.748.
1.27.
And then we tack on the donation from the...
You gotta add $500 to the revenue.
Effectively.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, just double checking that.
That's how we'll do it, and we'll show you an updated number.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'll take a motion to accept this.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If I pass this, I think we'll have a heck of a project here.
I just want to say thank you. I'm so proud of this town. I've lived here much longer than I thought I was ever gonna live here, and I'm not leaving. I love what's happening in Conway. It's so different from when I first came here.
Yes.
And y'all are really, the credit, you get the credit for this. And I'm so delighted that you're approving this. I don't think we're gonna let you down, and I know we won't let the city down. I think it'll be really a great move. And I just personally thank you, because my heart's been in this. Rick's, of course, has been in it. Thank you all.
Long overdue.
Very much thank you, and your team. We appreciate everything.
Just give me my pictures back.
Yeah, we want to do that. Thank you.
We appreciate it, man.
Thank you all. Thanks to the new...
Okay, why don't we come back in about 15 minutes, we'll have a council meeting.
Scotty.
Huh?
Akudo from school today.
Did he?
Yeah, so. First week he got something else. He thought it was, that's what it was, but it wasn't. Uh-oh.
Where's he go to school?
Which one is next to Hogan and Hollis?
Oh, uh.
If you would like to join us tonight, we always precede our council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask Alderwoman Sheila Isby to say our prayer.
If you'll bow with me. Our gracious Father, we thank you for the blessings that you've given us. We just pray, Lord, and thank you for this community that you've graciously blessed us with. We just ask, Lord, for your continued grace and coverage over our community. We ask, Lord, that as we make decisions, as it relates to this community that you've blessed us with, that every decision will be made and everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight, and we will forever give you the praise. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Garrett, would you please call the roll? Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mill?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
You should have received copies of the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting. Any additions, corrections, or motions to approve?
Motion second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries eight to zero. If you will indulge me a moment, we always like to take a moment each month to say thank you to some very special employees who are reaching anniversary dates with their employment with the city. We have somewhere between four hundred and fifty and five hundred employees, depending on the time of the year. They do a great job for us, and we don't get to say thank you nearly enough. So we want to take time on their special anniversary dates, pat them on the back, give them an anniversary appeal, and, uh, and say thank you. So for five years of service, we have, from the street department, civil engineer, Jack Raskin, and he's got his family, so come on up. Brand new. And I will tell you to know this morning, his family's just moved to the office.
No, you gotta do it, bro. Uh-oh.
Now, where the border is this one?
One.
Aww, how cute.
Okay, for five years of service also, if you wanna stand up here too, it's family, come on up. Meg Hawkins, administrative assistant for the street department, come on up, family. Last name similarity there.
Take your hand out of your pocket.
Are you gonna claim me? Are you gonna claim me?
I'll claim him.
Now, you know we had it on TV. I don't know if I'd claim him or not.
All right, and. Tyler Whittingham, our chief financial officer.
All right. Can you believe it? Boy.
For ten years of service, Lance Thlower, communication telecom engineer with information technology, I don't think made it tonight, and Melva Mullins, deputy court clerk with District Court. Thank you. Come on up.
You're on the crowd.
All right, for fifteen years of service, Captain Larry Sanders with the fire department, well, thank you, Sabina Quatien, and engineer Danny Collins with the fire department. And for twenty years of service, Major William Tapley could not be here tonight with the police department, but James Burnside, B report programs manager with Parks and Recreation, yes. James, come on up.
Bernie.
If someone wants to start singing that Bob Seger.
Oh, Lord, here we go.
And Sergeant Chuck Townsend. Chuck, you have your family here too?
Yes, sir.
Bring them all up.
All right.
And Sergeant Mike Gullis of the police department, come on up. We appreciate each and every one of these employees and their families, because they go to work with us too, in a sense. So thank you very much for your service.
I can't believe five years we've already gone by.
Great to serve.
Yeah, thank you for serving.
Congratulations, buddy.
I recognize you.
I'm good.
I know it's that hard.
Thank you.
Stuck it out. Just watch your back.
Next up is our monthly financial statement. I'm gonna ask our just-recognized CFO, Tyler Whittingham, to step forward and walk us through that.
Before I start, I'd just like to say that these have been the best five years of the past five years of my life. And I mean that. I mean that.
The bottom of your five-year bucket.
I mean the bottom. The bottom. All right, here we go. Look at the month of August, starting with the general fund, as always. I'll start with the revenue section there. You'll see, uh, fourth item down, the insurance tax turnback from lot fee. We've started receiving that money. Uh, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be about, just a little bit higher than our one point one million dollar budget there. I think it came in at about one point two million this year, so we recognized that over the course of about three or four months in the middle of the year, and, uh, so you'll see that, uh, that's about two months' worth there for July and August. You'll see another received in September, and then there may be just a little bit more recognized in October to get it all, all used up. Uh, sales tax has been a roller coaster for the past four months. Uh, this month it was down again, just a little over eight percent, but luckily, the early part of the year was, was fairly steady to the positive for us, so year-to-date through August, we're, we're pretty much flat. We've not gained anything, we've not lost anything, and that's, that's how we budgeted for it, so we're in good shape as far as that goes. Um, another item I might point out to you, permits. You can see it's been a good year for permits. Uh, if you drive around the city, there's a lot of, a lot of construction going on, and that's being reflected there, so that's, it's not a lot of dollars to the city, but it's, it's good that that's going on, and it's good that the construction's going on, just in general. Uh, expenditure-wise, not a whole lot to talk about there. We are showing a, uh, net expense through August. I missed last month's meeting, but I tried to point out that that was another three pay period month for us, so we're just, it's gonna take us a month or two to catch up from that and, and get back on track, and then the, uh, lot fee turnback money will help us a good deal, because that'll be another, we're showing net expense, two hundred and forty-six thousand. Uh, when we do September lot fee turnback, it's gonna be about that much, so I'm hoping when I come back to you for September financials, we'll be at least at a break-even point there, as far as the general fund is concerned. Any other questions or comments on the general fund?
Hey Tyler, in the non-departmental expenses, are those things that typically happen front-loaded more than?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that's our, uh, membership dues with municipality, metro plan, all those things are due usually in January, February. Insurance as well, property and vehicle insurance. Moving on to the street fund, uh, pretty much the same, same tune I play every month for you. Sales tax continues to be in the pot. Uh, state tax turnback, which includes the, uh, the extra sales tax that we're kind of holding back for major street projects, that continues to come in just a little bit higher than what we budget for every year, but that's, that's a good thing, so you can see percentage-wise, that seventy percent number is just slightly above where you might expect us to be through August, and, uh, everything else is pretty, pretty standard there. Expenditures are, are being kept, uh, well within check there, and we're still showing that expense for the year, uh, all due to the too many dollars we turned over to the highway department on the Dave Ward roundabout project, I believe, wasn't it?
Yes. Dave Ward project east of the interstate.
Right, right. So it's, you know, looking forward to the end of the year. I haven't really done any projections on it, but if we do show a little bit of a negative, it's, it's not anything to be alarmed about, because it's, that's something that we were.
It was a project we were funding.
Right.
Exactly.
In the previous two and a half years or so, yeah, or one and a half, I guess. Any other questions or comments on the street fund? Move on sanitation. Sanitation fees are coming in right on target. Uh, it's been a good year for the sale of our recycled materials. We're almost collected a hundred percent of our budget there, and, uh, our other revenue items there are, are pretty much on target as well, just our landfill fees. Insurance proceeds, not anything we ever budget for, we just recognize it when we receive it. And then there, interest income, we've just about collected everything there, which is good, and then just a miscellaneous revenue line item. And we'll probably come back and, and amend the budget for that miscellaneous revenue, just to sort of tidy everything up before it's all said and done for the year. Expenditure-wise, same as street fund, they're, uh, being kept, uh, well within check, and then overall for the, uh, at this point during the year, sanitation fund showing pretty healthy net revenue coming into the last quarter.
Do we have any big purchases outstanding out there, or no?
We, yeah, we do, yeah. We've got, I think Joe's got several pieces of equipment he's looking to buy.
What I was thinking.
Anything else on sanitation before we move forward?
And just, just kind of re, picking up on what Mr. Hawkins said, that, um, once they start spending money, they can spend money very quickly because of the scale of their equipment.
Look at the airport fund next. Uh, revenue-wise, those two, uh, hangar rent line items, renewals, I think, are set to happen this month in September, since that's the month we opened the airport, so, uh, when you see the September and October financials, hopefully we'll be mostly, if not all the way back on target as far as budget's concerned for those two line items. And expenditure-wise, we're just not spending much money anywhere, really, except the general fund, and the general fund's not overspending, they're just hitting their, hitting their targets, but our other funds are, are keeping everything below, so airport fund also showing a net revenue, uh, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars coming into the, uh, heading into the last quarter of the year, and you can see, just flipping over a couple pages of the balance sheet, it's starting to get a decent little balance of money in the, in the bank there, so, uh, that's good to see. Any other questions or comments on the airport?
How are fuel sales?
Fuel sales has, has been a little bit down all year. Uh, that's.
Continues to be that way, doesn't it?
Yeah, and I don't know that necessarily down is, is a good word for it. That's one of those, you know, coming into the air, opening the airport, we really didn't have any history to go off of as far as what our fuel sales would be, but it's a, that's a budget number that we're continuing to, to try to peg. Is Mr. Zilks behind me?
Mr. Zilks is walking right up behind you right now.
I can see, I can see the eyes coming back to the back row, so, um, I'll speak to that. Ty, Tyler's right. Um, I wouldn't, the last couple of months, say that fuel sales have, have been down, but like sales tax, flat would be a very good word. Um, you have, you have to keep in mind that even when we moved two years ago, a large portion of especially jet fuel was in some way or another tied up in the energy industry, whether it was Southwestern Energy, whether it was any number of a half a dozen, eight, ten different customers that all come along with that. For budgeting purposes, that is basically dried up. Um, I'm hopeful at some point that that will come back, but, so what I see when I look at this is, is a flat number, considering that all of that is basically gone. We've had new customers, um, who we previously were not seeing before who've picked up most of that slack. So on the jet side, um, it's not, it's not gonna be a fantastic year with just astronomical growth, but, um, we're doing okay. Everything's ticking along, margins are still good. Fuel, you know, typically is, when I've been in it, when you see fuel come down, it hits a hard bottom and then jumps right back up, and prices have not done that, so, um, our margins haven't been under a lot of pressure. Um, every, we've been keeping everything in pretty good shape. Av gas, on the other hand, especially with the new hangar that we completed, um, about ten months ago, um, getting those additional aircraft on the field, there have been some months that the av gas sales have been up in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty-five, almost even, we've had a couple forty percent year-over-year months in av gas. Now, the volume isn't nearly as much, so those percentages grow and shrink very quickly, but we've had several months over six thousand gallons, um, of av gas sold a month, and, and, uh, over at the old airport, our experience with it was thirty-five hundred to four thousand gallons was a very, very good month. So I'm encouraged with the trends that we see there. Now, if av gas is a little more volatile price-wise, so if it were to rapidly jump to five and a half or six dollars a gallon, um, that av gas is much more price-sensitive, and you'll see the, you'll see the volume fall back off, but so far, um, I've been, I've been very, very pleased with what we've seen out of the av gas the last eight, ten months.
What's today's gallon price?
Uh, it's three seventy-five if you do it yourself, and four twenty-five if you buy it off the truck, and that's about, if you wanna go get it in Little Rock, and pay about a dollar seventy a gallon more than that, so.
It's close to six dollars there.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for me on that? I'll sit down and get out of the way.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
And then the only other page to discuss, the last page there, showing the balance of our major project funds. Uh, the Parks and Rec A and P tax, which ties into the committee meeting discussion, you can see there two point four million dollars at the end of August. It's, uh, holding pretty steady at that today. Uh, Steve and I just looked at it one day last week, I think, so we do have a healthy balance coming in too. So, we do have a healthy balance coming into all these projects that have been discussed for some time, that hopefully we're gonna start, uh, start to get moving on. Pay-as-you-go sales tax, uh, we took, uh, we deposited some, uh, what was it, was it loan money we put in there? We deposited something in there other than just normal month of sales tax. And my mind's going blank now what that is. It's, we, we took a, took a draw on one of our loans to get the balance back up or something like that. That's why you see the receipts at two point two million dollars as opposed to a normal sales tax month, which is two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. And the street impact fees, both those, uh, I'm sorry, impact fees, both street and parks, uh, those balances are holding pretty steady where, as well. We've not really spent much of that money so far this year.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Motion and second to approve the monthly financials, financials discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. I'm gonna ask you to suspend the rules and move item number A, one A seven forward to deal with it real quickly, so that, um, uh, our city attorney can address some issues involved with that, and then he's gonna have to leave. Uh, but also I wanna ask you to suspend the rules, not only to move that up, but at the end of the meeting to include a s- a special resolution coming from the street department.
I'm moved.
Motion and second to do those two items, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries eight to zero, the rule's suspended, then we'll deal with item one A seven right now, Mr. Hawkins.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that, um, this is an ordinance, uh, for rezoning property at forty-eight twenty-five College Avenue. Presently, it's zoned A one. Uh, the requested zoning is for a P U D. And, uh, we have, uh, memos from the planning commission that come to us and say that this was reviewed by their commission meeting on September nineteenth of this year. And at that time, they voted nine to zero to forward this to city council with a recommendation of approval, including some final development plan conditions. Those conditions are listed there. There are six conditions, uh, they address everything from, uh, developed on, uh, as shown on the site plan, plating required, setbacks, parking areas, stormwater drainage, uh, minimum allowed square footage of residences, and minimum, uh, green space requirements. And those are the, uh, uh, conditions. And, uh, we have an ordinance to read for this item, it's ordinance oh sixteen...
One oh six.
One hundred and six.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings, all in favor of waiving the three readings and bringing it forward for action on tonight's agenda. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero, we have the ordinance before us. Mr. City Attorney, you wanna deal with this?
Yeah, if, if you're gonna look at, uh, accepting the, uh, planning commission's recommendation of approval, one of the things I would suggest and advise against is, uh, is the restriction five there on the minimum square footage allowed. Um, that's one of those things we kinda get into in a disparate impact situation, discrimination, uh, an impediment to, you know, equal housing, that sort of thing. If the private developer chooses to have a minimum square footage, that's his decision. However, if we mandate it, it takes in kind of another realm. So, uh, if you're looking to approve it, uh, and that's what you choose, I would recommend and advise that we do it without the condition five.
Okay.
What was, what was, what was the reason if we put it in? Why did they want that in there, you know?
It's, it was kind of my, well, I'll let you go.
Uh, council, the, uh, this eighteen hundred square foot minimum was brought in, um, added by the commission via, uh, neighbor concern. Just asking about a certain, wanting houses to be a certain size compared to the surrounding area. So, that was, what was decided, almost eighteen hundred of... Mr. Johnson can explain some more, but during the planning commission, he was saying the minimum he would go regardless was probably gonna be fifteen hundred, and more than likely, two thousand square foot plus was probably gonna be the average size of the homes. So, uh, then we started looking at that, it would be, if this was added, it would be unprecedented. We've never done that before on any type of conditional use or a P U D, setting a minimum square footage. That's normally something you see in a subdivision, covenants and restrictions.
Very good. Any questions to the city attorney before he has to take off? Very good. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna go coach Buddy Lee.
Very good. And he might stick around close. Okay. Uh, we have a motion waiving the readings, we have the ordinance before us.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance with the conditions, um, excluding number five.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt this ordinance, uh, with the, the various conditions, six conditions excluding five, therefore making it five conditions. Okay. Discussion or public input? Any public input? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Lance Johnston, uh, three forty-four Conway Boulevard. Uh, Michael Harrison and I are the developers for this, uh, P U D. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it. I know you have a limited amount with the plat, but the, the only other request I would have is that, uh, the four conditions, the first four conditions came into the planning commission already in place after meeting with street, planning, uh, city, sanitation, fire, all of those things. And the planning commission added that final, the minimum green space. We have well in excess of the, the minimum required green space. And they added a ten-foot green space at the back of all of the properties that back, uh, West End Park. And the reason being, the, the same reason the minimum square footage, there were some neighbors who were concerned about having a neighborhood behind their neighborhood, cause they've enjoyed fifteen acres of wooded land, uh, the entire time they've lived there. So, our, we are happy to, to have that in there and would love to see it approved. And if that needs to be in there, we'll gladly accept it. I don't know that there's any other neighborhood in town that has a required ten-foot green space at the back of their property for the protection of the neighborhood behind them, where a neighbor can't, or a property owner can't clear their lot if they want to or choose to. Now, we've already hope and fully expect that folks will wanna keep this natural and not cut down the trees that currently are a natural barrier. Would like to not have to mandate that, uh, for the folks who buy these lots. So, that would be the other request I'd ask you to consider, maybe removing that sixth condition as well. And I, if there's any question about exactly what that is, I'd be happy, or Jason could explain what that is.
So, that would be, basically, it's an amenity to those people who don't own the land.
Right.
Back up against it. But it would be an amenity to the people who could buy the homes built on the land, but you don't wanna be tied with that inflexibility.
Right.
That's basically what you're saying.
Right. And like I said, if you guys wanna keep that in there, we're happy to, we would still, we're not gonna withdraw our request if that, uh, needs to be on there. But would love to give the people the option of having a buffer at the back of their property or not having a buffer at the back of their property. We would encourage everyone not, we, we as the developers will not go in and clear that land and sell empty lots. We'll, we'll not clear any of those trees. But when you, when you sell a lot, someone say, hey, here's your lot, and it's a hundred and twenty-five feet deep, but oh, by the way, the back ten feet, your neighbors behind you actually got to say that you couldn't clear that land. Be nice as a developer and the seller of the lots to, to allow them to have the freedom to, to do what they wanted with it.
I will say that that, that language is a strange, relatively strange language, cause green space...
It's pretty generic.
Can be long.
Yeah.
It, it could just be long.
Right.
So, I mean...
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have to be wooded.
If it's, if we're gonna save the trees, we need to specifically say...
Save the trees.
Well, the, we have, and you can see on the plat, there is a significant amount of green, probably more green space than any neighborhood P U D in town. I mean, we have a three acre pond plus, uh, four other, three or four other contiguous, contiguous, uh, green spaces. So, there's a, a large percentage of green space. The purpose of that green space was as a buffer for trees.
Out the back windows.
Out, yeah, from the neighbors across the, uh, the drainage ditch on West End Park.
I almost think that if the people in the neighborhood existing wanted green space, they should have it in their yards, not the other... I mean, if they want that up, then they need to plant trees in their own yard. It's not really necess, it's not really up to them to...
By the same token, this, this is what y'all agreed under the planning commission, right?
That is what the planning commission added to approve the plans, correct.
It's not what they agreed.
Right.
It's what the planning commission imposed.
It was the stipulation they had, uh, put on to bring forth to pat, and again, if, if that's...
Did you object to it then?
Uh, I think we asked, we, we, I don't, I don't recall. I mean, kinda what we're saying now, and they, and they chose to keep it in.
But in reading this, if it just says green space, they can cut the trees down and just have yard back there.
It says nothing about keeping the trees.
It doesn't say anything, so I think it's pretty...
Uh, yeah, I, I'm not sure, I, I didn't, I don't know how it was worded, so...
Myself and Brian talked about this today before he left towards, uh, meeting. If we're gonna do something like this, green space, again, is very generic. If the language is gonna be added, something of maintain, retain the native trees. Just kinda let you know, if you're not familiar with the area, there is a probably five to ten-foot concrete ditch that runs along the back edge of the Weston Park property line. So, it basically touches the property line of this, and there's trees all up and down it. Plus, I believe there is a sewer line that runs right in that same zone, about ten, twenty feet, uh, right there. And, uh, and, um, Mr. Johnson may know, uh, it's by deed, there was a right, there's easement granted for that sewer line. And typically, common corporation sewer lines run twenty, twenty-five feet. So, there's a lot of prohibitions already in a utility easement on the back.
So, this might be redundant.
Possibly. Uh, but if we were gonna approve something like this, green space easement really is not the probably the proper term. It would be more something about tree removal or maintaining, retaining the trees. And of course, that's, um...
That would be more operable to the purpose.
Yes, correct.
And I would love...
We can't build anything back in there from rear yard setbacks and easements and host of things. So, it's not a matter of what can be built back there, it's what's gonna be left back there.
Correct.
I would love to see the integrity of the trees maintained. Um, I don't care if they clean the brush up around them and all that, but to, to maintain those trees along that, along that strip.
I will say this much, I will say this much, it is rather odd that single-family homes have to be protected from single-family homes.
I, I understand that. I mean, I really understand.
Yeah, I mean, I say both sides of this, and then, you know, it's probably gonna be fine either way, but, you know, this is a P U D, not just simply zoning. And, uh, a P U D is sort of a planned master deal, and if you wanna leave some mature trees as part of the deal...
That's our option to do.
I mean, that's, you know, that's, one of the things we try to encourage is green spaces in these developments.
Exactly. And I think, I think any resident that would buy those lots would want those trees there. I mean, I can't imagine them taking them down, because that buffers in between the neighbors also.
But there's people that believe that.
I know, I know.
But the problem you're gonna have, though, is in ten years, nobody's gonna remember this conversation, somebody's gonna cut them down, and...
And nobody's gonna know.
What are you gonna do? I mean, I...
Well, that has to be conveyed from Lance and them to the property owners.
But they, that'll change hands.
But I know they will change hands, but...
But we deal with this.
How do you do?
As a matter of fact, I think this, you were relating with the sewer easement, the contractor actually cut some trees that were down at one point, and they had to go back and get replanted. So, it does happen, but there is recourse.
Could I, can I add one thing?
Yes.
If you do decide to keep this in, I would ask that you would, uh, I think the comment mature trees. So, what we wouldn't want is for someone to not feel the ability to cut down a bush or a hedge or a thorn, a thicket, uh, to make it usable. So, I think there's some language in historic district of, uh, the precedent, I think, is trees eight inches in diameter or wider are, are required permission to take down. I would be fine with something like that, but I'd love to...
I think that's fair.
I'd like to...
Eliminate the snakey-ness?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, and, and you, and you don't wanna have a situation where someone doesn't know what they can't, kinda like you, you've already said with green space. It's a little, it's a little too wishy-washy now. So, if you are gonna keep that in, I'd like to maybe have it defined really well, because then the property owners association can communicate really well that any trees on the back ten feet of your property over eight inches in diameter, you can't cut down. You know, so some, something that...
I don't think nobody wanna buy a new home with a brush pile in the back of their yard.
There are some folks who've looked to wanna keep their lots really natural. So, that's part of the, the, this particular neighborhood. One of the things we're doing is we're not clearing all the lots like most of the developers do. And that's actually really appealing to some of the folks that are looking at our lots. They don't, they like the idea of living in a wooded treat area, not, not in a neighborhood where the biggest tree was planted last week. So, that, so I, I would not be surprised if folks didn't wanna clear, you know? And we're gonna incur, like I said, as a developer, we're not gonna take down a single tree that doesn't have to come out to, to do the infrastructure. But I hate to put on, I don't wanna make it harder for me to sell lots to people. So, any restrictions is gonna make that more difficult as the developer. Obviously, we don't, we don't wanna put any unneeded impediments on folks.
Very good. Any other discussion?
I think you're going this direction, I was just gonna add to that. I think you've already hit on it, that there is a ditch back there, and there are some existing drainage problems back there. So, I would encourage you not to prevent the homeowners from maintaining that area. Trees are okay, but underbrush and things of that nature can, can be a problem. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, guys, I know a lot of y'all, it's been a long time. It's good to see you. So, I'm one of the homeowners that, that backs up, and, and I think, uh, I hadn't got a chance to really visit with Lance other than just to see him at the planning commission meeting the other day. So, it's not that I'm opposed to this plan or anything. So, uh, I noticed a little surprise about, well, the planning commission did these six or seven things and stuff, and how did that come about? And so, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, uh, my lot is, has exactly...
Did you say your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve Jones, uh, live at forty-eight ten Canal Place. I just assumed y'all knew me, but I don't know you.
All the other people don't know you.
All right. So, um, uh, grew up in that part of Conway, been there since nineteen sixty-eight, give or take a mile in a year or two here and there and other places. But, uh, I understand the, the, uh, the development side, I've been for development in Conway, y'all have done a wonderful job. Uh, y'all have always done what you can to take care of real estate values and stuff, and it's much appreciated. I mean, I appreciate it, and if the, there's somebody in this town that doesn't, then they're just wrong. There are exactly, if I, if I read that plat right, there are exactly three lots that are inside what would be my property line. And then another one, this looks like it's within a few feet immediately to the right, so I get to see that one right there. And then another one is maybe another, looks like another ten feet or so to the left. So, from my backyard, you know, this whole, don't wanna look in other people's yards, that's not true. It's absolutely not true. It's, there's, it's, there's just this population all of a sudden that hit my backyard, it's just insane. And then it's some of the other neighbors as well. You know, where all of a sudden you got one yard that sees in five, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And so, the way, if I heard right, when I kinda just brought that to the planning commission, you know, some, they, it was like it was all kinda new to them. And so, then they started, there was a little brainstorming going on and some thought process and stuff. And it came up that, well, let's, let's, and Lance had mentioned, you know, uh, minimum square footage. And I don't know that we've pinned that down yet, right? Because we said we couldn't, there, right now, we have a, of what Lance says. And I get that, except for, we'll come back to this in a second. But he says fifteen hundred, somebody wanted, but he would have hoped that they're building bigger. Well, where I am, the lots are smaller, one of them is point one four acres, you can see that. The other ones are like point one five acres, I think it's a little over six thousand square foot. I can't remember what your typical residential minimum lot size is in the city of Conway. But this is a PUD, right? So, it's gonna be smaller, we're just all, yep, we're just gonna develop it, we're gonna make it smaller, make sure it fits right. Well, does it fit right? You know, is, is putting three to five right there in a view with somebody's yard, is that, is that the right fit? Is it, or is it the right fit, because that's the way we're gonna develop it? And why do we make the smaller ones right there? Is it because, I mean, it, I mean, if the developer wants to live in one of those, that'd be nice. But it'd be my guess, he's probably not thinking about living in one right there, he's thinking about moving somewhere else. And so, coming back to what the planning commission, they literally said this, and I hadn't thought of it. Well, what happens if the project fails? Because we've heard this whole, it's gonna be like Hendrix Village stuff, and I go way back, I go back before Andy even, right, right, I'm sorry, Andy. But, but we've, we've heard this talk about Hendrix Village type, type, uh, uh, developments way long ago, haven't we? And we've seen them fail, we've seen them not happen, uh, not come to fruition. And, and I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but, so the thought was, and the planning commission said, what happens if it goes belly up? What happens if he has to sell this lot? We don't have anything on here, that we'll have tract housing back in behind over there. And, and that's my concern, it's not with, with this development or anything, although I am a little concerned with looking at five, but I'm not concerned with all the green space requirements that y'all are talking about, I'm really not. It's just, you know, I could have five sets of... neighbors in my backyard, and you know, that's, that's a little unusual, but, you know, maybe it is. But that, that's kind of how that came about. Now, on the, on the green space, and I, and I would like to just address it just a little bit, because the city has a little bit of an issue back there. Y'all may have had it brought to you before. I've never brought it to you. But literally in that sewage area, the trees, and these are really not trees, these are weeds. Weeds grow into some of these trees, but in general, there's weeds and stuff growing all up and down that ditch line right there. And if, I mean, I wouldn't want to make somebody keep that over there. That's ridiculous. You know, and some of it's, the root structure's gonna bust up your, your storm drains and things like that. And maybe that's being addressed here, and y'all already know it and stuff, but, I mean, the, the whole landscaping thing, you know, 20 feet and a buffer to keep from seeing and stuff, you know, that, I mean, that, that wasn't that big of a deal, with the exception of, he talked about not fencing the subdivision or something, and so then they, you know, they kind of brainstormed on how to kind of buffer some of that impact, because it is a visual impact. And, and it's nice if, if they're gonna build these big, beautiful homes, but even if they build these big, beautiful homes and stuff, you know, to see five of them immediately, you know, they're almost connected to your backyard, I mean, that's, that's a little, a little intense. And so when, when they made that statement about going to 1,800 square foot, and I'd never heard that before either, you know, and I, I didn't think it would stick, and I didn't actually intend to have to get up here and speak tonight and stuff. But the, the reason, they said immediately behind that, we put that in here, he'll have to go back to the drawing board probably to see if it will, because that won't fit on those lots, and guys, it won't fit on those lots. I, maybe it will, he probably has a plan for them. I, I don't know. But I, and I asked this question, and I don't know how this PUD works, I don't know what the side setbacks are. I don't know how the drives are, are, you know, are they sharing driveways coming in, you know, or, you know what I mean? There's a couple of things going on. I, I just don't understand. And that, I asked that question, and by the way, at planning commission, nobody gave me the answer. They looked like they hadn't heard it before. And so, and that's how some of these five or six or seven items came about, I, I believe. But they, you know, it's not like I was, and, and my neighbors are screaming for these things. I mean, they just all of a sudden said, well, what about this? What about this? I have to redraw it, da-da-da. And then all of a sudden, we're in here today with exactly the same thing. So I just throw that out, and, and of course, I trust you guys. Whatever y'all say is, is gonna be fine, but it does seem like there's an overpopulation of houses.
He's right.
I don't know. Y'all tell me what you think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good to see you again. Mr. Lance, would you tell us what the minimum requirements are for lot size, just so we can get a scale of how this differs from that?
In a, in your typical R1 zoning, just your typical neighborhood subdivision, it's 7,500 square feet. In this case, when you take those lots on the, on that drive, when you average them out, they, they get right there around that 74, 7,500 square foot. So they're a little bit narrow. There's a couple 53-foot lots, but...
As opposed to the...
As opposed to typical R1 requires a, a minimum of 60-foot. 60-foot wide and 100-foot deep. These are running 53 to 60, and also, but they're also running about 120, 120-plus deep. So the smallest lot, I believe, is, is unfortunately right behind 4810. I think it runs 53 by 125. I don't have the plat right in front of me. So that's the smallest lot. So that's, that would, that's gonna take some design, designing to, you know, if you're gonna put a bigger house in, but, I mean, it's doable. We've had, and we've been bringing about some smaller lots. These, when you consider what's been passed in other PUDs, such as Shaver's PUD, these lots are probably, are twice the size. So it's more, it's getting you closer to your traditional neighborhood, but due to the fact that it's not your typical fifth of an acre, quarter of an acre, that's where the PUD comes in versus just a rezoning to R1.
Is it craftsmen style houses? Lance, is that what y'all are building, or wanting to build in that area?
We, so the reasoning for the shape and size of lots, we're going for more of an Old Town feel, and these are very typical of lots in Old Conway. So the style of the homes, we'll be the exclusive builder, as the developer too. So, you know, I appreciate Mr. Jones's concern for our financial well-being and not going belly up, because we're not just selling lots, we're not gonna allow any builder to build anything. So we're the exclusive builder. So what we've already talked about is anything that's historical in feel. So it could be a craftsman house, a Tudor house, a colonial, they, they, not unlike the Village, you see a lot of different style houses in the Village. Probably a little, well, it, it won't look like the Village. I'll just say that. It'll look like there's a house on Conway Boulevard right now being built right across from the CBC gym, which is on a 60 by 150-foot lot. It's a 2,700 square foot house that, if you drive by, you probably wouldn't imagine that. It's very much a model house for what we're gonna build 15 more of on this development. It, when it's done, it'll look like, hopefully, it's been there as long as my house, which is next door. It's 108 years old. So all the driveways, I'll address a couple of the questions that, that weren't asked in the other meetings. There will be a driveway between every house, so no house will be closer than 25 feet from the house next to it. So all of the garages and carports will be in the rear of the houses, and so there won't be two shared driveway and then two houses five feet apart on the other sides. And when we pour the street, we will set all the driveways on, on every street. So it'll feel like an historic, a new historic street is exactly what we're going for. Also, I believe, and I know this is probably irrelevant, I think Mr. Jones mentioned last week that his house is for sale, and although I appreciate him wanting to keep his property value up, he's the only person from the neighborhood that showed up and spoke against it, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he's trying to sell his house. We're a year and a half or two years from developing this. The odds are if his house is for sale now, he's not even gonna be living there. I hate to put restrictions on for a particular person who has concerns, who's not planning on being there, when none of the other neighbors have come forward and asked for any of those things. So that may be irrelevant, but I was surprised that he was trying to sell and then working pretty hard to, to impact what we do when he's not planning on actually living there.
I did receive an email from someone in that area as well, that's not Mr. Jones.
Yeah. Well, they, we had a public information meeting where four neighbors showed up. Brian was there, and none of those folks came to the planning commission meeting. That, they left, just wanted to know what we were doing, and were satisfied with the information they got, and didn't come to the planning commission meeting. And there may be other neighbors. Mr. Jones is the only one who spoke at the planning commission.
Lance, I have a question.
Yep.
Probably for you. Looking at the map here of the requested rezoning, the upper part of that property is not being rezoned. It's being left A1. You know the little quorum I'm talking about?
In that where the, the, the homes going, or the...
I'm sorry, which, which spot?
Northwest corner.
The northwest corner is not asking for rezoning. Well, what, do you, do you own that piece, or...
I, I think you're referring to the, the two pieces...
Is it the retirement center?
The two parcels. We're gonna sell the one parcel. There's two parcels up there that probably aren't drawn on the PUD. One of those we'll sell to Bill Maynard, because it's directly behind his house, and cut...
Okay, I see.
And cut off. And the other parcel we're selling to the mayor's brother, Todd, because it's directly behind his house. And those two parcels were really cut off from being green space and usable. So we're selling those to the neighbor to...
I didn't know what the plans were for that. So they're gonna be sold off.
And by the, by the city's advice, they were left out of the PUD. So they'll be replatted by Mr. Townsend, Mr. Maynard, to become part of their existing lots.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Basically, those, those parcels are not accessible.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Well, that's why I was wondering what was gonna happen to him, is he'll sit there.
Right. And we didn't want the PUD restrictions on lots. That's why they were left out of the PUD, because they won't be part of our neighborhood.
And my brother did tell me that about 515. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Or anybody, yes, Ms. Cochran. I didn't say it earlier, before Mr. Jones stood up. Anybody who does come far to speak tonight, could you identify yourself and where you live, for the record?
I'm Judy Corcoran. I live at 4820 Canal Place, and right next door to the Joneses. And our house is not for sale, and we're gonna be there for a long time. And we really, really enjoy the trees. They're large trees, very tall trees, birds that you don't normally see land out in those trees, and we watch the birds. So I'm just asking for that green space or something that will preserve, they're natural trees. They're large, they're mature. They're, I, I haven't actually been over there, but I think there are some that are more than eight inches in diameter. So that's, that's what we're asking for. All along Canal Place, it's the same situation. The trees, we all back into that ditch, and there are other neighbors who, I was here at the planning commission, and I, I did speak to Mr. Johnston at the information meeting. So he has heard from us, and, and we're not leaving until our children kick us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We, we have a motion already in a second. Is that correct?
I said we have a motion and a second. Yes. Any other discussion?
I would like to amend the motion to strike the language in, in item number six and add mature trees of a diameter of eight inches or greater to be left on the, on the buffer there.
And that's, that's the required minimum 10 feet in that 10 feet?
In that 10-foot area, in the green space.
Very good. Required keeping of trees over what would be considered a standard eight-inch, wherever you measure that. Was it four feet up or something like that? Five feet up or? There's a, there's a standard button. Absolutely.
Yeah, just, maybe just cleaning up the language a little more. Would it be better in saying a 10, instead of saying a 10-foot buffer used within 10 feet of the property line? I mean, essentially, you're talking about the same thing, and that's gonna be easier to measure as a surveyor, because surveyors are gonna go out, they're gonna put pins in the ground. That may be a little bit easier to, to say 10 feet from the property line. That way, you're going property line, which is exactly where those trees are gonna be, and, and go off, 10 feet off the property line. Would that be acceptable?
Some moved with that language, yes.
I think we can just use the language that's there.
What he said.
10 feet of all lots. Yeah, I think the language that's there is pretty good. So we'll go with that. Step far now, if you'd like to speak. Yes.
Just making a point of clarification. Kim Jones, 4810 Canal Place. There's already a 20-foot right-of-way easement, so I'm just making sure that the 10 feet you're talking about isn't already the 20 feet that's on the plat. Is that, am I just misinterpreting that?
From the property line.
From the property line.
It probably would be included in that.
Probably included.
It's the same.
It's the same, yes.
We're just saying on his 10 feet, the mature trees have to stay. Okay, I just wanted a clarification on that.
Yes.
Which raises an interesting point. Should we say the other side has to too?
Well, we don't have any means to declare that one.
Now, Mr. Clausen's gone, but what is the recourse if somebody cuts down their tree?
They're actually, I think, required to re...
I need to put another one up.
To, to replant, to some degree. There was a, a hotel in Little Rock up above, was it Landers Toyota, that cut, that cut all the trees on the hillside, and they've had to pay some kind of penalty. I don't think they ever replanted the trees, or if they did, they planted them real small. Mr. Bells back there remembers that. I don't know what they actually, but there was a, an effort to recompensate the city and the neighbors from doing that.
Well, and since Lance is the one that's building and developing it, I mean, it...
Oh, yeah, I'm just thinking, in 10 years, somebody's gonna cut a tree.
And it's in the covenant, if he has it in the covenants and all.
It's gonna happen.
At those...
It will, but someone could pull that up and...
Somebody else could deal with that then, it won't be us.
Could require, what about you, but definitely not me.
Well, I'm assuming this would be part of the covenants of the neighborhood. That would be written in as part of the covenants there. So just like any other neighborhood covenants are enforced.
That would give them a better chance, because they won't necessarily be handed this, but they'll be handed the covenants, so that makes sense. Okay. Any other questions?
Are the lots on either side of this road the same width? Are they different widths?
We actually, by the city planning department's advice, chose to mix larger and smaller lots together to avoid what happens often in neighborhoods where you have all the small lots at the beginning of the neighborhood and the bigger lots at the back. Planning actually encouraged us, and we really liked that idea, like in Old Town, where not, you don't have the first half of the block are 1,500 square foot housetes and the last half 3,000. So we're really, that was based primarily off of the city's recommendation, and we really liked that idea, so we gladly platted it that way.
Well, that's, thank you. I appreciate you.
Yeah. And as far as the size goes as well, we're fine with whatever kind of, kind of minimums y'all said. I understand the city probably not wanting, and, and I understand Mr. Clausen's made a lot of sense. I also was curious about mandating the size of houses in the neighborhood. That, you know, so anyway, but we were fine with 1,800 square foot minimum. We didn't plan on building houses smaller than that anyway, but are also fine with that not being in there.
So I, I think on his advice, it doesn't need to be in there, so.
Do we have any other subdivisions anywhere that have two cul-de-sacs in the same street?
You want me to address that? That's a driveway. The second part is a private drive that'll ultimately go to just two or three or four houses at the end of the street. So the city street...
That was a little different.
Ends at the cul-de-sac. And, yeah, when that, ultimately, that'll go to, that driveway will be split up to others, but that'll be a private drive from the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you. That's just, I'd not seen anything like that before.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and second, and we accepted a friendly amendment to the green space. Any objections to accepting that amendment to the green space, redrafting that to basically say required keeping mature trees over eight inches in diameter from the rear of the lot line? So this removes the fifth condition, but keeps and redrafts the sixth condition.
Yes.
Okay. No other discussion? It being an ordinance, Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Le... Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you for the constructive discussions. We appreciate that. Mr. Hawkins, now, now you may start at the top of the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is consideration to approve the removal of vehicles from inventory for the airport department. We have two vehicles, a 98 Ford Taurus and a 2005 Ford Taurus. And, Mr. Zilks, they're not functional, apparently, or maybe we're needing some...
Perhaps functional, but in need of some serious dollars for reconditioning. Both of these vehicles were acquired to our possession with the buyout that took place when we moved from the old airport to the new airport. They served us well for a time. We've since been able to replace both of these vehicles with newer and more serviceable vehicles, and we would like to, you know, just get them off the parking lot. And we'll take what, whatever funds we can, they'll be auctioned as is, whereas whatever funds can be generated from that will be put back into the airport department.
I make a motion that we do this.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
Well, just like the vehicles we see from the police department, I'm amazed at how old these things are. No one can say we don't get our money's worth out of the vehicles we have.
Nope.
Goodness gracious. Kudos to the fleet management department, keeping those things running. Wow. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the removal of these two Ford Tauruses, a 1998, from Mr. Grimes' point, and a 2005. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Mr. Zilks, stay close. The next one we have here is an ordinance appropriating funds for the purchase of additional aircraft radios and replacing a license plate camera for the airport department. Would you like to speak to this?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the three readings? Signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? That carries eight to zero. The ordinance is before us. All three readings are waived.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt this ordinance. Discussion?
All right. What we're doing here is, we would like to purchase two, the additional VHF airband radios that we use to talk to airplanes. One of those will be put in an airport vehicle. The other will be, I'm not a radio expert, but basically, we can put it in the city's new radio system. new radio system. And there's some way we'll be able to use that radio in the event of an emergency to communicate with fire and EMS and things of that nature. So, it's something that seems to us to be something that's worth doing, something to talk to the IT department about. It's something, actually an idea that they presented to me and it's something that we're all together on board with. We've got the money to buy the radio. One of them standalone is about $800. It's actually less than a lot of the ones that are in fire trucks and things like that. And we've got, we've got the money, it just was not allocated in the proper place. And then the license plate camera was purchased as part of the security system for the airport, among all of the other security cameras that we have. It has since gone non-functional and I'm told that it cannot-
That's a very pleasant way of saying it.
It is non-reparable and needs to be replaced. And so, if we want to keep the integrity of that system the way that it was designed, we need to replace it.
So, this reads plates when they come on to and off of the-
Yes. I'd never seen this before, but the way it, the way it's set up, when you come in the entrance drive, it's able to cover both lanes. I've seen it in action in day or nighttime, doesn't matter. If you drive in and it timestamps when those, something comes across that camera so we can go back and look and check all of the plates. Obviously, not something we watch all the time, but if there were an incident where we needed additional evidence, this piece of equipment provides that for us.
It's an, it's an area where expensive items are kept.
Yes.
And it's a, and it's a very, needs to be a very secure area.
Yes.
By FAA regulations, so this is a, this is a pretty-
This, this was something that, I was not aware of doing this, was something that Chief Gary, you know, obviously before I was here, he had a lot of input in the way that this system would be designed based on his background and experience with both aviation and policing. And it was something that he really, really, really wanted us to have in our repertoire of things in the security system.
Very good. Any other discussion? Then, Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve the neighborhood traffic management program, traffic calming, for the street and engineering department. And, Mr. Vincent, would you like to come up and tell us what we are changing or updating or trying to say here? Thank you.
So, I'm not asking the council to vote or make any kind of motion on this tonight. I just wanted to give you guys an opportunity to see my proposed changes and they're quite extensive, as you can see from all the red on the document. Mr. Bell approached me about this some months ago and he and I both agreed that the existing program is overly complex and so we seek to streamline the process. One of the things that we're going to do is, my department is going to take over the management of the program. Till now, it's been handled mostly by the mayor's office and it's required a lot of back and forth between his office and my office. So, just allowing my office to manage that, I think will streamline the process. In addition, the, the equation that is used to determine whether or not a street meets the warrant is relatively complex and I think it's unnecessarily complex and I'm seeking to simplify that just so that it's easier for a layperson to understand. And also, there's a lot of guidelines in here regarding whether, let me start over. The way it's supposed to work right now, the way the document is written, is that there is one set of warrants that determines whether or not a street is even eligible for traffic calming. And if it is eligible, then there's another set of warrants that sets priority for how the city's going to pay for it, assuming that we don't have funds to pay for everything. And that's not how we do it right now. The way we do it is, we ignore that first set of warrants and we, actually, we don't ignore it, we use that first set of warrants to determine whether or not we're going to pay for it. So, we're, we're not really doing it the way the document says we're going to do it. So, what I seek to do is rewrite, rewrite, write the document, excuse me, in such a way that it's written in the way that we intend to implement it. And so, I'm going to change the first set of warrants and say that if a, if a street meets that first set of warrants, then we're going to pay for it. And then a second set of warrants that's, that's less limited, limiting, and if it meets that second set of warrants, then the neighborhood is eligible to pay for it. And I'm completely eliminating the last section, as you can see, it's just, it says ranking the streets. That's the section that's supposed to give us, tell us what the priority is so we know we've got more than we can pay for. Well, that, that just doesn't happen because we don't have, we don't pay for that many. We put, we allow neighborhoods to put a lot in, but we don't pay for that many. So, so that's a summary of all the changes that I'm proposing to this. I've left all the red in here so you can see what it looked like before and what I'm proposing. In two weeks or at the most a month, I'll bring a fresh copy of this that I would propose that you vote on.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Vincent? I will say the subdivision ordinance requirements are, is a different document.
Yes, that will not appear. I wanted you to kind of see what I was going for there. My hope is that in a future amendment to the subdivision ordinance, we'll make some changes that will hopefully encourage developers to design subdivisions in such a way that after the fact, traffic calming is less necessary. But that won't be in this document, obviously. It will be in the subdivision ordinance, so you'll see that as a later date. But if you have any comments on that, I'd be happy to hear them.
Very good. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds for the Spencer Street Brownfield Cleanup Project. This is a accounting ordinance and it's ordinance 016-108.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings? Second.
Motion and second that we waive the three readings and bring this forward for action on tonight's agenda. All in favor of waiving the readings, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Motion and second for the adoption of this ordinance, and again, this is an accounting ordinance. Any discussion? There is no discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero, Mr. Hawkins?
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero, sorry.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 3600 Donald Ridge Road from I-1 to R-1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 19th of September and the commission voted at that time nine to zero to send this to City Council with the recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance 016-109.
Make a motion to waive the readings? Second.
Motion and second to waive the readings. All in favor of waiving the three readings and bringing this forward for action on tonight's agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. The ordinance is before us for action.
Make a motion for adoption? Second.
Motion and second for adoption, discussion? There is no discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1330 South Donaghy Avenue from A-1 to O-2. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on the 19th of September 2016. A nine to nothing vote by that commission sends it to us with the recommendation of approval and we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance 016-110.
Make a motion to waive the three readings? Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings and bring this item forward for action on tonight's agenda. All in favor of waiving the readings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Ordinance is for us.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Motion and second for the adoption of the ordinance. Any discussion?
Do we know what's going to be built here?
Life choices.
Of the life choices. I don't guess I saw that. I'm sorry.
Anybody like to speak for it?
Oh, no, we got, we got it.
Got it.
Thank you.
It'll be a welcome addition on that street.
It will.
It's been blanked for government.
If anybody likes to speak for it or against it? If not, council? We have a motion and second and the ordinance is for us. Any discussion?
Thank you.
There is no discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Is that a double vote, Mr. Jones?
Is that again?
Is it a double vote?
No.
An aye and a yes?
He wanted to say aye.
No, I didn't.
I just want to get the records played.
I was, I was reading something, sir.
Okay, I, I understand. Mr. Hawkins?
We're already done item seven on our agenda, so we'll go to the final item, item eight, consideration to establish the review date for the conditional use permit granted to Phoenix Recovery and-
I'll go on and take this one, Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, thank you.
We do have Mr. Bell here, but really, this was, this is not for our discussion tonight. We did bring this up, if you'll notice, on this conditional use permit, which was issued November 25th, 2014, that item number three was the conditional user permit was valid for one year from that date and the applicant must appear before the common city council in November 2015. By that time, the treatment facility had not been opened. We actually wanted to clean that up and work with it, so we put it on the agenda for January if so of this year and then decided, we decided to pull it back off to deal with some other issues. The facility, the treatment services facility has opened and they're in operation, but they have, Mr. Bell, when did you all open?
You want me to come?
If, if you don't mind, yeah.
Thank you. Matt Bell with 1225 jersey. So, the conditional use was originally November 25th, 2014. So, I just want to kind of give a timeline of this so everybody's clear on it. Construction permit wasn't issued until November 6th, 2015.
Right.
So, we had some planning, construction drawings, procure the financing. The completion of the new building and the C of O was obtained in May 20th, 2016, so of this year. We had Department of Health kitchen approval on August 1st of 2016 and Department of Human Services Drug Abuse and Addiction Treatment License August 31st of this year. Okay? We're currently going through a certification through the Commission of Accredited Rehabilitation Facilities called CARF. That's the gold standard for rehabilitation facilities. That's expected, we started that in January of 2016. It's expected to be received in January of 2017. We have an inspection November 14th through the 16th, onsite inspection through CARF. CARF is important from the regard that insurance companies and funding for treatment is typically required to have a CARF certification of, or the joint commission certification. So, CARF is a very recognized standard, so.
Very good. So, operationally, you're not even fully operational?
We are actually doing pro bono work for 20 clients currently.
Okay.
Okay, so we are part of the, part of the CARF review process, that we have files in place. So, we're doing outpatient services for individuals that are in current treatment.
But it will be to fully ramp up your, your program, it will be-
That's correct.
Starting in January.
That's correct. So, starting in January, you know, currently, we're receiving about 20 to 25 calls a week from clients within Faulkner County or Conway that are seeking treatment. Without insurance, the funding for individuals is usually not feasible. It's, it's a costly service. So, as we get this license, as we achieve our CARF funding, we're going to see a drastic change in our clientele mix. It will be a lot of individuals, local individuals, a lot of people that are working here in the community, they're going to be outpatient and possibly in residential, so.
Very good. Okay, now, one thing that this is not, this conditional use permit is not the transitional housing element. These are two separate issues legally in terms of what's come before us. In good faith to the treatment services facility, that one-year period, depending on the construction, because of the construction cost and all the certifications, we have not given Mr. Bell and, and Phoenix Recovery the opportunity to operate in that environment. So, what the, what the effort at establishing a one-year point was to bring them back to see if their operations were problematic. Okay, we can't do that. We need to set a time by which we put up a review and just to cover those, you know, to review those operations for the purposes of this conditional use permit. Okay, and that's just the treatment services component of this. Okay? So, that's what we're asking for tonight, is to set that date for a future review of the work of the, and effect of the clinic treatment services. Okay? Everybody follow that. That's all we're doing tonight, is setting that future date. Okay? So, full operation will be January, quasi, you know, kind of test run of the, of the operation is going on now?
Yes, so we have all the paperwork documentation we're waiting on. We're actually licensed under the Department of Human Services now. So, the Arkansas Department of Human Services has licensed us, however, the CARF certification is a third-party certification on our practices and how we perform. That certification will come in January, which will allow us to take clients that are, that have insurance and that can afford the treatment.
Very good.
I got a couple of questions. First of all, what has he been doing all along? It's been open. Do we not check on that? Does that not count because he's changing?
We could, but it's not the full treatment services facility that we agreed to allow him to open.
Okay, so if he changed again, we got to redo it again?
No, he's just been ramping up. So, we've not been given a full, we, if he wanted to do a review based on it right now, yes. But he's got the, the ability, if we say, well, based on what you've done so far, go right ahead, he's going to ramp up to a bigger operation come January. So, we're not even doing our review of good service by reviewing it right now.
Yeah, but it was supposed to be reviewed six months ago, eight months ago.
You wouldn't have had anything to review, you wouldn't have had a basis to decline it.
I know, but what, he was operating before that was open and we should have-
He didn't get, he didn't- He didn't get, he didn't...
That's not what, that's not what this refers to.
That's the transitional housing, this is the Treatment Services, that's two separate issues.
This is a new building they built recently.
For a new service, this is not the transitional housing unit that we did earlier.
So you're talking about waiting till next year to have a review here?
I'm just saying, if you want to do a good, good job on the review, that's just what I'm just saying.
Yes, enough.
Yes, I'm, so at some point, yes, I, I can't dictate that, though, y'all will have to, but if you're going to do a...
He won't be here.
Do justice, that's true, good point, not going to argue that, but if you're going to make a good, a good effort at reviewing the operations of the Treatment Services component, he's not even fully operational yet.
How long have you been operating the Treatment Center?
About, well, August thirty-first, so...
That's when it opened for the first time?
That's when the, uh, license from the Arkansas Department of Human Services Behavioral Health was issued. Um, our, uh, certificate of occupancy for the building was May twentieth of two thousand sixteen, so we actually have offices there, uh, we're using the offices for staff anyway, uh, which, uh, separate from the, the treatment function. So this is clinical treatment function, um, to utilize counselors and, and to have treatment services.
So, the operation we permitted him to do by this conditional use really hasn't gotten started till, in a very truncated way...
Limited, limited way.
August thirty-first, and it's been going on for less than a month, and it won't be ramped up to a full operation till January.
Weren't we supposed to already review the in-home treatment? I thought we were supposed to review that again to see if they were following their guidelines and...
We, we, that's a constant element of review, but this is not that.
I know, but are we supposed to be reviewing the other?
There's no more official review at the City Council level unless we bring it back up, or it's brought back up as a...
Who's reviewing it?
We, as staff, are doing a constant monitoring of that, Police Department, Planning Department, City Attorney's Office, and my office.
So we don't get to find out?
And actually, we've met a number of times on this issue, Mr. Bell has met with us.
Like I said, so we don't get done here what the review was, anything?
Well, we've been working with Mr. Bell on a number of things.
So that means no?
It's not in front of you, no.
No, I didn't say that, I said, so we don't get a chance to hear what the review was?
There is nothing like, there's nothing like this, where there's a review required.
I understand that.
Okay, he's gotten everything officially from the City Council.
We, we were having issues, though, with the in-home treatment, though, that we were going to come back and review it, I remember we had talked about it, but we were going to give them time to get this in place before we did that.
And I don't, I don't remember if we put in a second period of review after the first period of review, Mr. Bell, do you remember that?
We did.
There was a six-month follow-up.
There was, and we never did it.
There was a six-month follow-up, which is this date that we were coming back for this review, you know, so it was a six-month follow-up from the original conditional use permit.
Transitional housing?
That, no, not on transitional housing, just on the treatment. So, there was, there's nothing left on the transitional...
See, I didn't think there was anything left.
And that is, there's nothing left on that, it is only on the additional conditional use permit that we're, we have a matter before the council, and it was a six-month follow-up, um, that was, uh, November twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen.
I'm pretty sure that when we finished up the transitional housing review, that was over.
This is an additional, this is additional conditional use.
On this treatment facility conditional use permit, yes, there is a follow-up that we didn't get to do in, in, in November of, of fifteen. We can go back and double-check the transition...
Double-check that, because I think you had told us, let's hold off on that right now until we get this going and make sure this is up going.
That was this.
It couldn't have been, because this was new.
We, we did this in fourteen, and we're supposed to have it back on the agenda in November of fifteen, and we got it on the agenda in January of sixteen, and then I asked you to review, to pull it back, and so y'all did that.
Wait, uh, that's how I remember, and I want Mike to double-check.
That's how we did, that's how we did this portion of it, the Treatment Services.
I remember the discussion of them being two separate issues, but I distinctly remember that when the transitional housing came into being, that there was to be another review that I don't...
And we had that review, and it passed.
No, I don't think so.
It did.
Well, we, we need to have Mike, Mike, you check.
There were conditions of the original zoning, and I have it here, there was thirteen conditions.
Conditions of the zoning?
Of the original...
Oh, is that's how we attach requirements to him?
So there were nine acqui, there were nine acqui, requirements, and if you all want to review that, um, I have it, but, since twenty-fourth is... I came back before the, I came back before, over these nine items, to discuss the status of those items and where, and they were all complete, nine items, including five, you know, concrete fence, privacy fence, uh, and these are the nine items, if anybody wants a copy of that.
I think, I think one of the things you were going to finish the transactional, on purchasing a house.
Yes, and which we did everything on the, on this.
Well, the second meeting happened on the transitional housing, and that's finished.
I'm talking about him following the guidelines of what was laid out, and David, I know you remember this, we talked about it during that, during all this, that he was not following by, there were people in here from all over the place, I mean, there, there were several things going on, and it was put on hold.
Yeah, from what I recall, and I've, I've met with them several times, uh, along with the mayor, there's two separate things here, and we're, we combined two into kind of one, so memories get hazy, but on the first issue, the first thing he did with the T-four rezoning stuff, we did attach that list of nine items, he did, if our memory serves, he did come back and talk about those nine, address those nine, and everything was satisfactory with those nine, okay? Now, outside of that, though, we may have some issues, as you described, with some of the people coming in, that's what the mayor and the police chief have been discussing with Mr. Bell. Now, I would suggest you call the mayor tomorrow and talk more about that.
Yeah, we were supposed to be in on that conversation, though.
But there's nothing, there's nothing left to come in front of the council at this point about the first issue.
That we couldn't pull his permit if he wasn't following by, by the guidelines? Or his, or his conditional...
You as a council could not do that. We can still do, pursue legal means if there's a problem in that regard, but you, as a council, have signed off on it, and have given us our marching orders, we have to make him comply with those rules, but you've done all your official actions on that, on the transitional housing side. Now, we've not slept, you know, and let it go to sleep, we've been monitoring it.
Because I remember talking to Jody about it, and that we found out they had some murderers living there, and some...
I would suggest you call the mayor tomorrow.
I will, I, I will, and have Mike pull whatever you need to pull on it, see.
We can, we can show you that that has been already dealt with, and the approval process was signed off on, and it was done. Now, we're monitoring his maintenance of those conditions, okay? That's not this, this is the Treatment Services.
The Treatment Service Center, I would recommend that we ask them to come back in April, after they've had three months of real, if they start in January, we talk to them in April, after they've had three months of experience as a fully operational facility, just talk about the Treatment Facility Center.
Second.
Can you say first or second meeting in April?
First.
First, uh, meeting in April, okay? First, uh, be second Tuesday, first meeting in April will be second Tuesday in April, whatever that is, okay? We have a motion and second to set that at second Tuesday in April. Discussion. Okay, if there's no discussions, everybody understand what we're doing, we're setting a period of time, we can come back and review the use allowed in this conditional use permit for the Treatment Services component only.
Now, I will say for the record, on this issue, the Treatment Service Facility, I do appreciate your willingness to try to help people in this community who have addiction problems with your treatment facility program, and so that is something that is needed, and so I hope that what you're doing is going to work out to our satisfaction, help people in this community, so thank you for taking this...
It's been a missing component, that's exactly what I'm...
It's, it's, it's much needed, and like I said, we get twenty to twenty-five calls a day, uh, I think for the good of the, our project, as well as the community, uh, it will change the demographic that some people have an issue with, obviously in the community, to serve individuals here, so...
Is it only Faulkner County residents?
It's actually anyone, but the majority of calls we're getting are from Faulkner County, uh, and I would say ninety-five percent are people that are already living here that want to, uh, come here, uh, to treatment.
Are these calls from the court sending people there, is people coming over, they want to check their stuff in?
Uh, a mixture, a mixture.
So the court has been mandating people to come to the Phoenix House?
No, no, they're, they're, they're mandating individuals as part of their plan to seek help, so the court will say, you need to go seek help, and they will go down a list of, of people that can provide help, and those services are currently in, um, plentiful in Plaskett County and, and other areas of the state.
Good. Any, any other discussions? Not sure.
I, I would, I would, during the review process, I mean, I, I would like to see how many people are in Faulkner County, how many people are from other areas, other counties in the state, you know, I, I want to know if you're helping people here, if you're just taking them in from everywhere, and there's people here that need help, and you're full, or whatever, I mean...
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to share that in, in April, and when, when we have occupants there, I'm happy to do that. I do think the demand's going to be here in this community, it's much needed here.
Well, I just know, I, I hadn't heard anybody being mandated to sit, to go over there.
No, there's nobody mandated, nobody's mandated to.
And they really can't be until you get your final certification, I'm hearing, is that correct?
Well...
Am I overstating that?
No, that's not true.
No, the, um, the...
They didn't pay for it themselves?
There's, there's different, uh, yeah, they would have to self-pay, so there's self-pay, there's also, but if the choice was to, for a person who has insurance, they're going to go to a place that is, that is funded.
Okay, that's the distinction. Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you.
No other discussion? All in favor of this motion to set a review period for the conditional use permit for the clinic treatment services for this, for the first Tuesday?
First meeting.
First, first meeting, second Tuesday, uh, in April two thousand seventeen. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Okay, Mr. Hawkins, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
For, uh, your assistance on the community development aspects of it. Under Public Services, we have an ordinance to approve funds for the Conway Event Center, uh, and the Conway Parks and Recreation Department, uh, this is the money that simply just allocates, that this will be paid for out of this fund, whether we actually do it in cash or do it in, in a five-year financing, uh, will be determined next week, I will say, for anybody who watched, uh, the, the committee meeting, uh, Ms. Mel and I are on perfectly sound footing together now on this, and we totally agree with each other, so...
I was concerned.
I think we were just looking at a nickel from two opposites, the two opposite sides, and that's all it was to it, so, but, yeah, she's got some concerns that are very valid, and we will make sure we get a more complete picture of where we stand on the Parks and Recreation and Financing stuff, okay? But the, the number that we are, are pegging is two million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven, which will be the outflow expense that will be offset, in essence, netted out with the contribution from the A and P Commission that they have already, already made. So, that would be the outflow, I'll ask you to approve this ordinance. That would be like a waving of readings.
Make a motion to waive the readings?
Thank you.
Thank you, all in favor of waiving the three readings and bringing this forward for action on tonight's agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero, this will be ordinance oh sixteen...
One eleven.
One eleven.
This is awarding this, this evening?
Uh, the, actually, I, I misspoke when I said bid, we have a, a construction engineer on this project, that's Salter, we've already approved for that.
Right.
So, they're going to bid the subwork, so we actually could get savings on this.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Salter made sure, he pointed that out to me, uh, tonight in between the committee meeting and the council meeting, it, it could be less than this, that's, that's a guaranteed maximum price, is what that actually is.
And, and the price here does not include the funding that's coming from A and P, which is a half a million dollars...
Right.
Toward this project.
But we'll recognize that on the revenue side, we're approving this expense at this level, because we will expend this much money, not the net amount, we'll expend the whole amount.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Okay?
Make a motion for the adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and second to adopt this ordinance, ordinance oh sixteen, one eleven, any discussion? If there is no discussion, Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. The next item is a lot of verbiage for a pretty simple process. What we are doing is that we've discovered, working at length, I know Mr. Bell has put in hours and hours on this, Mr. Ibbotson has, the Faulkner County Judge has, Mr. Ledbetter has, uh, trying to work with, um, meeting all the federal regulations to use this grant to move the historic bridge from where it sits over the Cadrin Creek to our city park. The fact of the matter is, we're going to miss the dry season, and when we could possibly lift this bridge, because it's a hundred and forty-seven feet long, you're going to get a massive crane in there on the muddy banks of a creek, and you're not going to do it once the season turns wet, so you can do it now. If we have to wait through all the federal regulation required processes, we can't get it done, and there's good reasons for the going through all that, but just to give you one of them, it's because of the Build America Program at the federal government level, they want to ensure that any new project uses American-made steel. And you have to prove that you're actually going to be using American-made steel, and for a bridge that was built in eighteen seventy-four, we can presume that, but we can't prove that, so therefore you have to ask for a waiver, and a waiver is a six-month process. So we're pretty sure it's American steel, the company is in Kansas, but we can't, we don't really have time to miss this window of opportunity, so just for reasons like that, and there's other reasons, too, you know, that deal with the process of federal government, we're asking you to allow us to switch monies. We are going to be over-matching the Davor Drive Pedestrian Bridge Project, guessing it's going to be about a two-million-dollar project, we have a fairly good idea about that, the engineering on top of that, we approved at two, at three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, last meeting, so basically two-point-three million. To offset that, we've received a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the State Highway Department, federal monies, so we're going to meet all those federal regulations on that project, a hundred and fifty-thousand-dollar grant from Metro Plan, so that's on top of that. UCA has come in and said they're going to pay three hundred thousand dollars to assist that project, and we just got notification that we're going to get two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars on a second state grant, so you total all that up, and we're still well over a million dollars contribution to the cost of the Davor, of the Davor Drive Pedestrian Bridge. But what we're going to do is, we'll swap dollar-for-dollar money, we're going to over-match into the Davor Drive Pedestrian Bridge with the county grant monies of two hundred and, what is it, Jack?
Forty.
Forty thousand dollars, and we'll swap those monies with tomorrow's approval by Metro Plan, so that their federal money that has to meet all the federal regulations goes with our federal money that has to meet all those regulations anyway, so those two grants will cover the federal regulations on that Davor Drive Bridge, and we can prove where that steel comes from and all those things, and then we'll take our free and clear money at the equivalent dollar-for-dollar amount, put it in the historic bridge project, and are immediately free to proceed with that on Thursday. That's all we're doing, if Metro Plan approves tomorrow. So, we'll ask you to sign off on that, that will increase the outflow of A and P money, we'll get more grant money, which will decrease the outflow for A and P monies for the Davor Drive Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. It was the, it was the explanation, wasn't it?
Yep.
All the hand-waving. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving, with the approval of Metro Plan, to switch the funding from, the fed, the, the, the funding from, our funding from the Davor Drive Project to the Historic Bridge Project in return for the county grant funding coming to us on the Davor Drive Project, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And if Metro Plan approves that tomorrow, we'll give the go-ahead to proceed with the Historic Bridge Project.
You know anybody we can call there? Say who I am?
At Metro Plan, you know anybody who works there?
Oh, I, I have a few contacts. Okay, moving into public safety, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the purchase of fire safety promotional products from the Conway Fire Department. Chief Mike Winter, he's in the back, I'll bring him forward.
Yes, good evening, we have, uh, Fire Department has received a check from Centennial Bank for five thousand dollars to purchase our fire safety material for fire prevention in the public schools and, well, all the elementary schools in Conway, and we are asking for your acceptance.
Make a motion to waive the readings?
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings and bringing this forward for tonight's consideration on tonight's agenda, all in favor of waiving the readings, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption, discussion? This will be ordinance oh sixteen, one twelve.
Twelve.
There's no discussion, Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Uh, the next item is consideration to approve the removal of vehicles from inventory and dispose of them, uh, for the Conway Police Department, Major Hearn is making his way to the, uh, podium.
I'm old and slow, I'm getting there.
You're doing good.
And you see there's four vehicles, four vehicles there? Been a loss if we purchased Crown Vic's, hadn't it?
We are trying to get them, Mr. Mayor, uh, we're getting down to that point, what we have here is Chief Spradlin initially came before the council, with these particular four vehicles, we were going to, uh, made arrangements with the state police to take, they were going to use them in their pit training, their supervisors have come back and said, we, we don't want them, so now we're having to come back before you and say... So now we're having to come back before you and say, they don't want them. They've been modified in the rear with some steel, they've disconnected some of the airbag systems for this pit stuff, so, you know, when you're doing this type of training, the airbags don't off, so we're essentially going to be selling them as scrap. We did get some reimbursement for our previous sales, that is also on the agenda tonight, so we're gonna do the same thing and try to get as many of these off of the, these old cars out of here.
Sounds good. All we need is approval, motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of removing these from the inventory and disposing of them for a final time as scrap. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. The next item is an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds for the rescue form, from the rescue, I'm gonna get it right here in a second, rescue wagon, rescue wagon, rescue wagon, Conway Animal Welfare Unit. And we have an ordinance before us, it'll be ordinance 016113.
Make a motion to waive the readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings and bring it forward for action on tonight's agenda, all in favor of waiving the readings, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Motion and second for adoption, again, it's an accounting ordinance, $352.80. No discussion, Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Then the last item on the printed agenda, we have the other resolution from the Street Department after this, but the last item on the printed agenda is an ordinance appropriating reimbursement funds from various entities for the Conway Police Department, it'll be ordinance 016114.
Make a motion that we waive the readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings, all in favor of waiving the three readings, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Motion and second for the adoption of the ordinance. We have the ordinance before us, you'll see the various items there, anything I can say about this, Mr. Hearn?
No, sir, the last one is some of the sales we got, we're taking and putting that back in my fleet maintenance, keep things rolling.
Very good. And you see all the different, various line items of revenue and expense that they'll be reimbursing. There's no discussion, Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. This is the resolution from, technically, out of the Street Department. This would be a resolution designating the Tucker Creek to Hendrix College bike route as Redden's Route. And I'm gonna ask you to pass this on the recommendation of the bike and pedestrian, and mind if you want to step forward, on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and I'll read it to you. Whereas Greg Redden has dutifully served as a member of the Conway Bicycle Advisory Board and the Conway Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and whereas Greg Redden has served as a significant contributor towards the city of Conway receiving its bicycle-friendly city status, toward the advent of bike lanes and charos in the city, towards the placement of bicycle racks at city facilities and on city properties, and for the bicycle facilities requirement of new development, and towards the development of both bicycle master plans for the city. And whereas Greg Redden has been a consistent advocate for bicycling in the city of Conway, both through his bicycling community participation and his personal life choices, choosing to ride with his family where many would not even walk. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Conway, City Council of the City of Conway, Arkansas, in recognition of Greg Redden's service to the city and his unwavering advocacy of bicycling as an alternative means of transportation for all ages, that Section 1, the bike route with termini in Gatlin Park at Tucker Creek Trail and at Washington Avenue at Hendrix College be named Redden's Route in honor of Greg Redden and his service and advocacy for a better Conway. And Section 2, appropriate signs be placed along the route to recognize this designation. Ms. Cole? Motion and second. That we approve this resolution, Ms. Cole?
I just thank you all so much for considering this, Greg has been a tremendous asset, and we're just very appreciative that we've had him.
And I will say that in anticipation, and Ms. Cole, this will be yours, to give to the Redden family. And Mr. Vinson, are the signs already up, or they will be up tomorrow?
They'll be up in the morning.
They'll be up in the morning, along that route, so, there you go.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, all in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move for adjournment.
Second.
And second for adjournment, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we stand adjourned.